Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee at the Home Meeting for March 21, 2023. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to again, please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Port?
Here.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item on our committee meeting this evening is Building and Zoning Committee Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have one item on our agenda, and that's the Aldi's at the Streets of Bartlett. The petitioner is requesting a modification to the planned unit development, and with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Stone to give us a rundown.
If you recall, back in 2000, let's see, where am I at? 2019, we approved a PUD plan amendment for the Streets of Bartlett with the anticipation that there would be an outlot in the center of the parking lot. We have since gotten an application in from Aldi, who is applying to amend the PUD for a 20,000-square-foot Aldi grocery store at the southwest corner of the property due to the utility locations under the existing parking lot. So they will be blending in the existing site with having the same streetlight, the same parking lot lighting, and the same landscaping in all the landscape medians. They are also requesting a final site and PUD plan for the Aldi itself. The proposed parking lot for the Streets of Bartlett and Aldi includes a total of 444 parking spaces. If you recall, as part of the downtown overlay district, we do allow reduced parking when there are shared users sharing the parking lot. When we look at that, we look at the time of day and the parking requirements for each land use. We then calculate what time during the day, during the week, there is the most parking demand. Based on the required parking calculations, all of the existing users in the Streets of Bartlett, which is fully occupied, the total amount of parking required would be 390 spaces. So this actually exceeds the parking requirement for the site, for the entire shopping center. There are the 11 spaces that have been dedicated for the future apartment building, so we can still accommodate that as well. If you recall, as part of the previous planned unit development, a variation was actually granted to reduce the parking. That is not even going to be necessary as part of the parking requirements per the TOD plan. The building elevations are going to be a combination of spec brick concrete masonry, and then the south and east elevations have fiber cement panels that actually have a woodgrain look. So it's not going to look exactly like this. When you actually look at the building material, there is a woodgrain. They do look textured. Because this is in the downtown overlay district, they did have to follow the Form Based Code. This is only the second project that we've had to review based on those design guidelines. They are requesting six major design exceptions as part of these proposed building elevations. They are to reduce the minimum ground story transparency on the primary frontage from 65% to 13.8 to eliminate the required two entrances on the primary frontage. In this case, that's considered Devon Avenue. They're orienting the building so that it faces east to fit in with the existing parking lot. They're asking to increase the maximum tower width from 30 feet to 77 feet. Again, this is along the east elevation. They're requesting to allow a facade compromise of less than 60% of a single major facade material. They're asking to be allowed to use aluminum composite panels as a minor facade material and to allow a change of materials when the facade's change of depth is less than eight inches. Again, this is an international company. They have their own building prototypes, which they follow. So they have accommodated many of the design requirements as part of this. They brought it right up to Devon Avenue to have it more of a street side. They are including bicycle racks in accordance with the downtown overlay district as well. Due to the request for the modification to the planned unit development special use permit and the six major design exceptions, they do require a public hearing that would go before the Planning and Zoning Commission should the board forward this on. The petitioners are present, and staff is here as well as them to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any questions from the committee?
Yeah, so help me understand how close this is to the sidewalk along Devon.
Along Devon Avenue?
Yeah. So right now, there's bushes there, right?
Correct.
Are those getting removed?
So on their landscape plan, they are installing new plantings. The ones that are there are kind of overgrown. They've been there since the center was constructed. So they are putting in some evergreens as well as some ornamental grasses, some evergreen shrubs and ornamental grasses. The building itself is set back 17 feet, or there's a sidewalk that's set back 17 feet from the right-of-way line. There's a five-foot sidewalk along the south property line.
And how close is it to the entrance where the CVS is at that entrance? How close is it?
It is 30 feet from the drive aisle. So they are relocating. The Streets of Bartlett currently has a shopping center sign approximately by where the handicap parking is shown. They are going to be relocating that sign for the existing tenants closer to the access aisle.
So I think it's kind of tricky getting out of that lot looking east for cars. So I don't know how much this will, because if you stop back before the sidewalk there, you can't see cars coming from the east the way it is right now.
You mean if you're on Main Street?
Yeah, those bushes are all in the way.
Right.
My wife has told me this many times. You have to go across that sidewalk to see if there's any cars coming from the east.
So if you, let me get back to the landscape plan. They are going to have, the monument sign will be approximately here where the existing shrubs are located. Those are actually going to be removed. The line of sight will be better improved from what it is now.
Good, okay. That makes sense.
Can you go back to the entrances? So we're going from what, the required two entrances? Is that what?
So the downtown overlay district is kind of anticipating buildings for multiple users, multiple shops, and so it's anticipating that you would have two entrances along a wall of this length. It's not really anticipating having one single user in a space this large.
That's just a factor of the TOD?
Correct.
And positioned as far as Pastamia is concerned, can you give me an idea, overhead view, of how far that's going to be away from their patio area? Where's the edge of the building?
This line right here is the edge of Aldi.
That's the corner?
That's the corner of Aldi.
And then is the loading and unloading left of that?
Correct. Kind of, this is the loading area. It is slightly recessed.
Yep.
They're putting in landscaping to help screen this area as well on the landscape plan. So from their patio, it's about 60 feet across.
And is there a, there's a waste removal dumpster or something there, right?
Correct.
So where is that going to be located?
So the dumpster enclosure is in this loading area. Again, this area, if you look on the building elevations, you can see that the loading dock is slightly recessed. So the dumpster enclosure would actually be below grade. You're not going to see it from the patio. You'd have, there's going to be landscape screening, like where this door is, parallel to that door.
And what time are trucks typically in and out of there? Somebody from Aldi here can answer that possibly. Is it varying times all day? Or what time are trucks in and out of the stores?
Good evening. Tom Straman, with Aldi, construction manager. To answer the question, trucks mainly delivering groceries overnight. As far as the dumpster pickup goes, I couldn't answer that right now.
That's okay. I was most interested in when the groceries are coming in. Is it the middle of the night?
Yeah, overnight.
Okay.
Kristy, I have a question. Can you go to the elevations of the north elevation of the building? Which borders Devon Avenue, correct?
Correct.
And that's the bottom one?
Yes.
Okay. And then the elevation that borders Pastamia, the north elevation?
That's north.
Okay. So from an elevation standpoint, I feel like we need to change that. And my opinion is, this building is in the middle of a downtown development, not bordering a back parkway. Is there a way to put spandrel windows and the woodgrain element on the backside to make it a little bit more appealing, as well as on the Devon Avenue side?
I will have Aldi answer that question.
Okay. And let's just keep in mind that we have that element on the CVS already. Fake windows and signage and stonework all the way around.
Did you catch the question? Did you get the question?
Yes.
Okay.
Chris Dare with Aldi, Director of Real Estate. That's something we can take back to committee at our national office and see if that's something they'll do. I mean, again, this is obviously our latest and greatest prototype, and with being so close to the corporate headquarters, they want to, you know, have the latest and greatest for when they have all the international dignitaries in and things of that nature. So that's something we'll take back to them and see if there's anything we can do.
That would be really, like, good neighborly with other businesses there.
This is a 365-degree building, in my opinion. It's going to be viewed from all four sides of it. The other question I had for staff, and maybe you can answer, is that just because the north elevation faces another business, are we requiring a parapet-type building where the rooftop units and all the rooftop equipment would be shielded from the view?
Yes. The mechanicals are actually, they have already shown the screening that they're providing, and the mechanicals are kind of outlined in that elevation. So we do require screening on all four sides.
Okay. And the only last thing I have on that elevation is, has it been discussed or has there been any talk about, instead of that wrought iron fence that is part of that, is there a way to put like a half-brick wall there versus the metal ornamental fence? For better screening of landscaping, sorry.
You're saying, asking to do...
Yeah, I'm asking...
In lieu of the landscaping?
In lieu of the, no, in lieu of the metal wrought iron fence, is it possible to do a masonry-type of half-wall for a better screening and better visibility, better aesthetics for the area?
You mean on the north side? On the north side?
Just on the north side. Just so you don't see the truck through the fence, is my point. I feel like that would actually hide the truck, had the truck been sitting there during operations of other businesses, so.
Yeah, I mean, anything can be done for a cost. It's just that we got to keep within the budget. Otherwise, you know, we won't get the funding that we need for the project. But that's, again, just items or suggestions we can take back to committee and...
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is the white on the plan, like, is that grass or what portion is that where the building ends?
In between the patio and...
Yeah, right there. What's that?
That is all grass. That's all going to be grass. They're putting in some landscaping. They haven't submitted the finalized landscaping. They said there would be some berming. I mean, probably not very tall, but, so that there'd be some difference in height as well.
And that was 60 feet from the rear of the building?
From the rear of the building to the patio.
To the patio, okay. The, back to your picture, the renderings of the, there you go. The third one down, side elevation, is this the view from the east?
Yes, this is what's facing Midway Lanes and O'Hare's.
So that's, so that's the view from, if you're standing on the west side?
Correct.
No, the bottom one is the east.
This is the east elevation. So this is what you would see coming from...
That's by O'Hare's.
Coming from the west.
That's by CVS. If you're looking, if you're standing at CVS.
Looking west.
I have a comment. The rear elevation that you have there, top one, that's the one that's facing Pastamia, correct?
Correct.
That's what I thought. And I agree with trustee Gunstein that if we could do something there to improve the aesthetics of it, that would be great. However, I do not agree with putting a half-wall there in masonry, because that would take away from the, anything that we did to improve the aesthetics of that wall. And if the trucks are coming in in the middle of the night, you know, it shouldn't make any difference if that's a fence there, but I prefer a fence there than a half-wall. Not in favor of that at all. I think that's going to be ugly.
Just too, too much?
Yeah. If we're actually trying to improve the aesthetics of that wall, and then we put the building wall, and then we put a half-wall up to shelter the trucks, you're taking away from the efforts to improve the building wall. So I would say, if trucks are coming in the middle of the night, so what difference does it make? Leave the fence there.
I would say...
I don't want to be staring at a brick wall if I'm sitting in Pastamia. I'd rather be staring at some aesthetics of the building and a fence. Otherwise, I'm looking at a wall.
Well, I was indicating like a four-foot brick wall.
Yeah.
More of a closed cell.
A four-foot brick wall is not going in.
Actually, it would probably, the black wrought iron probably matches what Pastamia has out there right now, right?
It does.
Yeah, I would agree.
I have something to add to this. My name is Nikki Cammer. I'm the engineer with RWG Engineering. We can actually get a berm in that grass area, about three feet tall. So by the time you'd have that berm three feet up, and then you put the landscaping on top of that, you're really not probably going to see much of that railing, that fence in there.
Okay, good. Good to know.
I would say I agree with that. If you do the landscaping properly, you won't even know that it's there. I would encourage...
I doubt you'll see a hole out of the building.
I would encourage any...
The sides of it, but...
If anybody's been to Gibson's Oak Brook, if you go to their outdoor patio, they've got a berm, they've got a water, not saying with a waterfall in, but you would never know that the mall is on the other side of their landscaping. So if done properly, Aldi will save some money. Pastamia will have a great view. We won't be seeing any trucks, and it's landscaping that will live on in perpetuity.
Beautiful building. I'm very thrilled.
I do have a question for Kristy regarding the traffic flow on the north side of the building, just between Pastamia and there. Will there be signs there? And right now, it's, I wouldn't call it the Wild West now. There's two-stop signs there now. There's not two-stop signs there, and it's always who's going to go next. It looks like two cars will fit through there. Just any comments you have on traffic flow?
Yeah, if we find that there, we're going to add the arrows to help designate, so people are aware that that's two-way for that drive aisle. And then we will have, we will look at when stop signs are necessary.
Any other questions? No. Thank you, guys, for being here. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
So we'll send this on to the Plan Commission for their review?
I have a quick question, too.
Go ahead, Steph.
Is there going to be a sign for Aldi on Bartlett Road here? On Main Street? Yeah, I'm sorry, Main Street?
On Main Street? No, but they are proposing to have signage on all four sides, and they'll have a monument sign on Devon.
Okay.
Just a question as far as the timing of these buildings. I know it's a protocol, but about what time, when do you think you would probably break ground on this if everything goes through?
Thursday goes well, probably in August. Thursday, and probably all in the year.
Okay. All right, well, we can speed things up, right, Kristy?
Of course.
All right.
I misunderstood. Was that the first week in August? Was that correct?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I thought we just...
Thank you, guys, for being here.
That's all we have under Planning and Zoning tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Danny.
Thank you very much. We have one item on our agenda this evening, actually two. We have the water and sewer rates, followed by the budget review. And with the water and sewer rates, I'll turn it over to our Finance Director, Todd, if you'd be so kind.
Thank you. Yeah, during our budget process, starting way back during the Capital Improvement Plan, we've been talking about water rates, sewer rates. This is just, we're getting closer to where we actually have to approve them. So this is our last review before we would approve them. I think in our, in the budget presentation, a couple of meetings ago, I talked about proposing a 4% increase for water rates and not raising sewer rates due to some delays in construction, which is delaying the IEPA loan payment. So just in review, based on, the 4% increase is based on our capital budget and our projected 4% DuPage Water Commission increase in their rate. The city of Chicago is actually raising their rate 5%. So DuPage Water Commission is passing 4% of that onto us. We are still using $500,000 this coming year with the American Recovery Plan Act funds. That is helping us a little bit in the 23-24 year. As you can see, this chart just shows where we are in relation to our ending fund balance. So we would be just over $5.5 million at the end of the 23-24 year. With the 4% increase, you can see in '24-25, it goes down quite a bit. We're on, we talked about a staggering water line replacement program between the streets and the water mains, and that's why it would go down in '24-25. We would build up some funds in '25-26, and then it would go down again in '26-27 as we have the main...
Todd, what would this chart look like without a 4% increase?
With no 4% increase? Just no, I have, at the back of our packet, I put some other rates. Let me see if I can make this a little bigger. So the one on the top, that's just if we delayed the 4% one year, like we're doing with the sewer. The thing about delaying is the 4% compounds. So you would have about $480,000 a year that we would be short each year, and that's why our ending balance by the end of this Capital Improvement Plan would be just over $1 million.
My objective would be, with inflation the way it is right now, I would prefer to push the increases out. I would much prefer to push these increased water rates out as far as we can get them until we have to start repairing some of the fund balances. I don't know, I'm not in favor of increasing water rates 4% during this economic time that we're having right now.
The issue with doing that is, so if we did that, or I've got a, if we just did a 3% increase, and in the year '26-27, you were down to $2 million.
Mm-hmm.
To get that back up, that would be almost a 10% increase. So what I'm trying to avoid is the big, the big jump. What happens is you're, if you have small increases that compound, and you can avoid the big increase at the, you know, as you're going down, to turn that momentum of going down around is going to take more than if you're going down slowly. That's why...
I understand that concept, but my objective would be for this next year to leave it flat, even though we're absorbing 4%, or to go to 2%. And then the next year, go to 3%, and then the next year, go to 4%. Anything that we can do to keep some money in residents' pockets at the present time. Because right now, the key indicator for every resident that we have is the inflation rate, and that's not going to be the same two years from now. Maybe a year from now or two years from now, the inflation rate's down to 2% again. Then people will be able to absorb an increased water rate of 4% or 5%.
This would put us short $2 million? Is that what you...
I would rather have our fund balances...
But we have excess in the fund balances, right? I mean, that's, we've discussed.
Yeah, so if we, there was no increase, our ending balance this next year would be just over $5 million. And then the '24-25 year, when we had the, and if we increased it 4% for '24-25, our balance would be down to just over $3 million.
Which is right at the minimum.
Which is in between, right, in between the minimum. But then that would require us a 4% increase in '25-26 just to maintain. And with another 4% in '26-27, we would drop significantly due to the, due to the line program.
I'm just trying to figure out a way that we could objectively push out any increases. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but I think if we can objectively push out any increases, especially right now, this isn't a matter of whether or not we can raise them a year from now. When you're paying four bucks a dozen eggs, you don't want another...
The hits keep coming.
They do.
Yeah.
So I would like to see it adjusted, and then tell me what we'd have to do a year, or not a year, but two years from now in order to increase back up to the minimum fund balance.
Yeah.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Agreed. Let's see if we can't do something.
I mean, in worst-case scenarios, if something happened, we have money in our general fund that...
General fund.
We can borrow the water fund to pay for this if something...
Yeah, I...
...happened.
We've got other capital improvement programs, especially the stormwater projects, the general fund we need to go towards, as well as the streets. Here's a, here's the increase that would show fiscal '23-24. So a typical...
What page is that?
This is page three of the memo. This is page 29 of the packet. So if, with a bill of 6,000 gallons, increase in the water bill would be $2.94. With no change to the sewer rate, that'd be a 3% increase in Cook County, a 2.4% increase for DuPage County.
I know when we talked about transitioning to Lake Michigan water, Burke Engineering gave us, you know, a proposal, a presentation. Are we on par with that proposal with rate increases and user fees?
Here's the, another page back is our, is our bill history going back to January 2012. So we started, actually, the 2017 rate increase, we hadn't raised rates for so long that we were really behind the game. So a 20% raise in 2017 was just trying to get us, you know, up to close. We were doing other things to not charge the water fund at that time. So back when the Burke study, they were saying rates were going to double, and that was just for the Lake Michigan transition. I think our rates actually went up about 85% when we, when we were up through 2019. So we would still, the 2023 would still be under the, you know, the doubling amount from that amount. So we did, we did well with that, especially we kept costs down. We got some good breaks on interest rates. That helped us out a lot. But we are still, didn't do as much as that doubling with the, was projected for the Lake Michigan water.
But that was primarily due to, because the infrastructure that needed to be completed for that, correct?
Well, these, these increases are mainly so that we can pay for this meter changeout program and also keep the water main replacement program moving. Back in '26-27, we issued bonds for the meter changeout program. In a roundabout way, we're actually still paying for those. So now we're changing out meters again, and so we're using the rates to pay for those meter changeouts. We've talked about with Dan's projections on how much infrastructure we have, what do we have to do to keep up with that. Again, raising rates is... Again, raising rates is, is compounding. If we don't raise rates, then it's just tougher to catch up in the, as we, as we move on.
Is there a point where it would ever start going down? Because I, I kind of feel like a 10% increase would hit people even harder.
I like it staggered, the way you've got, the way you've got it up there. Plus, if Dupage is raising the water 4%, we, we should at least meet them, right? Am I reading that correctly? The Dupage Water Commission's going to raise it 4%?
Yeah, their, their rate is, is raising 4%. So in the water fund, 37% is for debt service and capital improvements. Operating cost is 63%, or it would be $8 per 1,000 gallons. Out of that $8, the Dupage Water Commission rate is $5.39, or 69% of that. So there's, not a lot extra on top of the Dupage Water Commission rate as far as our operating costs.
I agree with your thought, Kevin, but I don't know if this is the, the budget to, to beat up on.
I, I just don't, I don't like the, almost being double what the water fund balances are for two years while people are paying for a higher water rate. I don't agree with that.
Hoarding that.
No, that's, that money is, is spoken for in the near term, within the Capital Improvement Plan. That's, we've got a plan for that money. If we don't, then we've got to cut back on, on the plan.
So where's the money going?
It's, it's going towards the meter, it's all, I have the capital improvement page in here as well. I put a lot of information in the. Yeah, I'm.
Yeah, the, the big portion is the $6 million meter changeout, which is being spread out over four years. That's why you see a reserve now, but it quickly goes down because we're going to be spending that fairly quick over the next few years. We've got the water main replacement program that we've talked about. That's on aver, we averaged about a million a year. Now we're looking at doing it every other year, so it'll be $2 million every other year. And as we talked about last fall, that number needs to be going up and not down if we want to try to catch up on some of the water main breaks that we've been experiencing. Those are the big ones. We've got the Sterns Road project that we just awarded. So there's still projects out there. We've got a water tower in the future. Just looking at the five-year capital program, those are some of the big projects that are still out there to be completed.
What would happen if, let's say we didn't approve the water tower that you speak of? How would our residents see an impact?
It's more in, you want to have a reserve, you have to have a reserve with the Dupage Water Commission. We've got it. It's, it's more of having enough so that if you do have a major event, we had a fire, and you want to be able to make sure that you can deal with that situation along with providing to everybody else. If that was in the middle of summer, on a hot, dry period, that would have been scary. It happened in February, I think it was, so water demand is very low. We didn't have an issue. But it's things like that where that water tower that we're talking about would help a lot during that peak time. And it's all timing.
Did we ever get paid for the bill that we sent them for the water on that fire? We have not. Have we followed up with it?
How much is the bill for?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred, hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand, roughly.
And we have to pay the Dupage Water Commission that, so we basically out that money? That's absolutely unacceptable. A company that size.
So whoever owns that property, we can put a lien on that property, or whoever connects to that water meter again has to pay for it before we turn on their water. Is that correct? Well, but I'm just saying, whoever, that water meter, whoever decides to build there again, can't connect under that water meter until it's paid for, right? If you use it, you bill for it. I think a Finance Director told me that about eight years ago. If you use it, you bill for it, and you pay it.
I think this is an unusual situation. I think it would be, I think we, we would look at that.
Thank you.
Is there insurance that's not covering any of that?
Is there any infrastructure projects that we could cut back on that could lessen the burden on the residents?
I mean, it's all, it's mainly water main replacement, so if we can defer those, it's just.
But that's not for 2024 to 2025, though, right?
That's that.
The water main replacement is in your budget for '24 to '25?
Right. And that's a project, I would, that's a project where we're trying to get funding for the road resurfacing, so we're trying to get the water main done before the road so that we're not tearing up the road later. So I'd hate to push that one back. But if we push that back, then we would probably push back the road resurfacing funding, you know, that type. But that's where it starts to compound after each other. The water tower is likely pushed back right now anyway because steel prices are still outrageous. And we, I don't see a point in paying a premium for that tower. We have time to kind of push it back. So it's probably at the end of the five-year, and we'll keep monitoring. If the prices are still way high, we'd keep pushing it back.
All right, let's proceed.
That, that is, we don't, we're not proposing anything for the sewer, for basically the, the water. Again, I would, I would propose, or we're proposing the budget, 4% increase unless a decision is made to, to go lower or to put it off.
Could we look at some, perhaps ask to get some numbers if we looked at maybe a 2% increase?
Yeah, they're actually in the back of the packet here.
Are they? Okay.
Just for clarification, can you touch on why we don't have to raise the sewer rate in this cycle?
Yeah, the main reason for the sewer rate increase was to pay the IEPA loan, the $35 million loan for the wastewater treatment plant. And those loans with the IEPA payments start when the project is substantially completed. So since that's been delayed, the, the payment date, the first payment date, which is estimated about $2 million, is put off. So we've already ramped up rates to, working our way up there, so that's why we're accumulating a surplus in the sewer fund. But on the, we'll be using that balance down too as, as well, as soon as that $2 million a year kicks in. That's, that's a lot of money.
So you're not asking for money in the sewer fund because we don't need it currently?
Right, and that's, and, and we shouldn't fall behind like we would. Here, here's the 2%, if we go with a 2% rate increase. We could do something.
Well, why, why, why can't you go with a 2% increase? Each, what we got in trouble with, with the water rates when we were in Elgin, is that we did not gradually raise the rates with inflation. So there was a period of four or five years where we never raised rates at all. And people got really used to that. We all got really used to that. But it wasn't realistic. You can't keep up your water system with that. So I would like to see a graph where you're raising it 2% this year, then 3% the next year, then 4% the year after that. Or just, you know what I'm saying? So cumulatively 4%, you would get the cumulative effect of a 4% raise over two years.
Okay. The problem is, what, you're talking about 5% inflation this year, though. So you're going to be a couple of years down the road before you catch up to even this year's inflation.
I get that.
Todd, what does this increase mean? If you could break it down, I don't know if you've thought about that or worked any numbers on that, to the average household?
It's on here.
Yeah, I missed that.
The graph is on page 29, I think.
It was $2.94 on a, on a bill for 6,000 gallons. So in Cook County, that would be about a 3% increase with no change to the sewer rate?
All right, if we, if we get into this discussion next year during budgeting, and these project, projected fund balances are way over the maximum still, I'm going to be very irritated.
They're going to be, they're going to be like, it's going to take a couple of years for them to come down as, as on, in the chart. We're going to be over next year, especially since we're not doing the big, the, the main program. It's gonna, it's gonna go up and down.
Yeah, I, I get that. But the point is, is do we have to raise it this year, or can we wait till next year? And start with a 4% next year? And I can see the balance, the fund balance in 2627 would be pretty low. I mean, it'd be dangerously low. And then that hurts our bond rating at some point. But there's got to be a, a happy medium here, where we don't have to hit the, the consumers now. I know $2.94 doesn't seem like much money, and it, but, but if you keep doing that every year, it's not just $2.94 this year, it's $2.94 every month for the next five years, you know? So I get what you're saying. I just think that there's a way that we can more gradually get the objective of having money for the projects that we have coming up, but delay it a little bit with inflation the way it is right now. That's my point.
Didn't we talk about the excess general fund money? I mean, over, and used for that?
We haven't discussed that, I think. Isn't that what Todd was just saying, though?
Yeah, we, we talked a little bit about the general fund, and we, we haven't, we don't have a revenue source for stormwater, or for, when the rebuild Illinois money is, was used up, now we're relying on MFT money. MFT money is about $1.6 billion a year, which won't cover our annual streets program. And we don't have any source of revenue for stormwater, and we've got significant projects in our program for stormwater improvements. We could, we could do a 3%. We'll knock it down to 3%. We look at it every year, see where we're at next year, and go from there, but.
Yeah, and maybe there are some things, like Trustee Hopkins said, maybe there are a few of those things, maybe even high-dollar things, that because of inflation right now, I mean, we're, we're being forced to move these things out because of supply issues. So who says that we, obviously, we're not going to crumble when we're moving them forward. So right now is what residents are feeling, is right now. So if we can move anything off into the future without it being a major impact to the village operating, why wouldn't we?
I think 3% is a safe place to land, in terms of the delays that we're seeing with some of these projects. I mean, some permits have come in really well, since the last three or four projects. We're fortunate with those, those bids.
As you know, we're careful. We look at those projects as they come up and see if there's the best way to, to make those, make cuts if we can, and keep them, you know, aggressively priced. So I, I think we won't get in trouble if we do 3%. And we won't get into that situation, Trustee Gansey, where there's, all of a sudden, there's 10%. And we're saying, look, we're in this hole. Because we don't want to have to get to that point. So as Todd said, we look at this every year, and we can find a, a happy medium. You know, we will have the 4% increase from Chicago, or from Dupage Water. That will be a consistent thing, so we'll need to look at that every year. But I think 3 is, 3 won't put us in that hole. And it addresses your concerns, Mayor.
All right.
I just want to add one other thing. I know we've talked about it in the past, kind of redesigning our bill, so it shows actually what our capital projects are, so the residents actually know what we're spending the money on. And if we have, oh, you have? There you go.
No, we, we.
Talked about it.
We, we didn't put it on the bill. We, we have, we're going to put a note on our bill, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
There's a section of the bill that will send you to this page that we reached out.
Okay.
So yeah, this is the underwater sewer services. It talks about how you can pay your bill, the paperless billing, then it, and then a little bit more of the breakdown on the water sewer rates. I don't know if you've seen, it's got a link to our, our Capital Improvement Plan, our Interactive Capital Improvement Plan, where they can go, see the water projects and the sewer projects that are.
We're trying to fit it on the bill, and so, that's all they can give more information if we were able to. So I think that kind of, this is that point where.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Next, on our agenda, we have the 2023-24 Proposed Operating Budget Review. And again, Todd, you're up.
Admin, Public Works, Finance.
Correct. Central Services.
You each have three minutes.
I was going to change our timing to percentage of budget, you know? So you've got a minute for every percentage of the budget you had. We're going to start with Admin, and Sam Hughes, our Senior Analyst, is going to take the reins. And Scott Skritti, birthday boy, our Assistant, is going to assist Sam.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Board, for allowing me to present the Administration Department's budget tonight. I'd like to start by just noting that the Administration Department's budget is up 13% this year. But 9.2% of that comes from economic incentives, and I'll touch on that as we.
What page are we on?
94.
94.
Oh, boy.
Of 283.
Correct.
That's where you should start, actually, Sam. Think I can see that far?
So starting with some of the highlights on page two and three of our budget section. The Village still sees strong industrial development with the, the board approving a Class 6B for the third and final large-scale industrial building in the Brewster, or the Cook County side of Brewster Creek. Additionally, as the, the TIF ends there, after 23 years, we've seen 40 buildings built, and the, the EAV has increased to about $88 million at this time. The Village joined the Coalition to Stop CPKC, along with seven other municipalities in Dupage County, to fight the merger of Canadian Pacific and Kansas City Southern Railroads. The Coalition engaged in an aggressive campaign enhanced via social media and several press conferences as well. Moving on to page four, the tree lighting event saw growth in several areas, including adding additional horse-tron carriages, four food trucks, a DJ, enhanced lighting provided by Home Depot, they sponsored it, as well as fire pits, and even a reindeer. Additionally, the Bartlett Rotary Club, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Lions Club all got together to create a Oktoberfest this year, and that, that event was very well-received as well. Moving on to page five here, the Village Board approved a two-year extension with our wastewater services group, Industries. And given the inflationary environment that we've been seeing, we're very happily, happy that prices remained flat that first year, and the yard waste stickers actually. And the yard waste stickers actually decreased from three fifty to two dollars each for both years there. Regarding the, the first goal under the short-term complex about attractive, attracting, attracting and incentivizing an additional grocery store. As we saw tonight, Aldi is anticipating review, receiving their zoning approvals soon and for a new building in the streets of Bartlett. Moving on to page six, the board's goal of developing railroad avenue is coming to fruition as well. The Moore Brewing Building is nearing completion. We've also seen La Petite recently opening behind the Banbury Fair. And we are also looking forward to site E, the apartment building there coming soon. The village went out for RFP for branding proposals. We received seven submissions, which staff narrowed down. They were narrowed down to the, to the top two after the last EDC meeting. And those will be going before the board soon. On page seven, the Bartlett Auto Mall has started construction for the Hyundai and Genesis dealerships. This is anticipated to be completed towards the end of year here. And in addition, the grassland subdivision is also beginning to, beginning earthwork there. And economic development staff is in regular communication with their broker for the commercial development section. The Pump Up the Art Program was a huge success this last summer. We, we received one hundred, over a hundred applications for painting of hydrants. And I think we received thirty-seven hundred votes in total. So it, it certainly exceeded our expectations for the first year and we look forward to continuing that program next year. Lastly, on page nine, the, the Little White Garage on the southeast corner of Oak and Oneida has been demolished. And that eliminated a long-term vacancy and a blight in our downtown. So we look forward to the numbers portion. We do not have any personnel or capital expenditures for this budget year. Looking at pages fourteen and fifteen, these conferences are all unchanged from the previous years. Although we did a goal-setting workshop, which we, we do in off-years for strategic planning, and that's ten thousand. Looking at pages sixteen and seventeen, these are also all existing organizations. Nothing's changed since last year. Onto page eighteen, as I mentioned earlier, the administration department's budget's up thirteen percent this year. But nearly seventy-five percent of that has come from the economic incentive line item, which is up two hundred and three thousand. That comes directly from the economic, or the sales tax rebates for Moore Brewing, Aldi, and the Auto Mall. Looking at the subscriptions line item, you'll also see a decrease of about fifty percent from the, from the previous year as we eliminated a local government new subscription. But this year, it is proposed to increase about twelve hundred dollars for the addition of Constant Contact. This is an electronic newsletter that would complement our current Bart letter and provide more timely information since the Bart letter is about every two months. We can provide more timely updates for our residents. The office supplies budget also sees an addition of fourteen hundred dollars. And that's for a laptop for the PIO position in, in case of an emergency. As this, so in the professional development, I discussed the, the ten thousand for strategic planning and then the economic incentives line item there. Looking at page nineteen, the community relations budget is up a bit with the additional funding for enhanced community events. The eight thousand, which was in there from last year for Oktoberfest, has been included this year as well. Arts from Bartlett's request is up about fifteen hundred dollars. They have asked for about seventy-one hundred for the Global Arts Fest, about eighteen hundred for the pet adoption event, and about two hundred and fifty for the Halloween Parade. That's about all I have, and if there's any specific questions, I'll take those.
With Constant Contact, is the plan to get rid of the paper newsletter that goes out? Or have people opt in for a paper if they want that and then just utilize email newsletters?
Are you, instead of the Bart letter, you're saying, or with the Bart letter?
Have the Bart letter come through Constant Contact?
We could certainly do that as well. We would, we, we would keep the paper copy as well. In our, in the recent survey that we, we did, that the Bart letter was still a popular option that people liked.
But I feel like it was popular for.
The Bart letter is a bulk mailing through the U.S. Postal Service. So eliminate, so having people opt in and opt out.
Okay.
So under the professional development, strategic planning for the year twenty-three, twenty-four, we're talking about the, what would be the next strategic plan then?
So the consultant. Oh, when we met in January.
Yes.
We were talking about the third year of the plan. So we'll need to do the next three years. And we usually do that in January, February.
Of twenty, so it'll be twenty-four.
Right, but in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, so, so the additional, almost, what is that, nine thousand? From twelve eight to twenty-one nine, is that right?
Right, Sam.
So the only difference is the consultants?
Yes.
The cost of the consultants?
Yeah, everything was mainly the same. It's just that addition.
Are the consultants required?
No, they're not required, but I think when you're, let me step back. With our three-year cycle, I don't think we need one in second and third year. But I think it's nice to have someone facilitating that conversation when you're looking to restructure the whole thing. So it's certainly up to you if you want to have that facilitated. I just think that it brings a different dynamic to that discussion.
How do we choose the consultants? Like, is that something that also changes with the budget or?
We have, we've had the same consultant for about nineteen years through NIU. There was a period where we had a different consultant every two or three years. I will tell you that NIU is probably the cheapest because they, we get them through the university. But there are a number of consultants out there. It wouldn't be hard to find somebody else or not. I mean, really, it's, it's at your preference. If you think we can restructure it like we did just us folks, that's fine, too.
I think it's good to have a facilitator, and I think we should have Stephanie choose one.
I could choose one. Do you think Stephanie could work with, with staff to come up with?
Yeah, Stephanie, you're going to work with staff to come up with somebody really exciting. All right?
I could do that.
Okay.
Any more questions for administration? Public Works?
Thank you, Sam.
Good job, Sam.
Scott.
All right, Dan has got the, the crew with him tonight in the audience for specific questions, I think.
We got water, we got everything over there.
We got sewer, we got.
What page is public works on?
Good evening, we're on two thirty-three for streets.
Two thirty-three.
I'm going to take streets and water, Tyler will take sewer and parking. And then I do have Mike Warmus, our street supervisor, John Puglia, our sewer supervisor, and Blake Grenley, our water supervisor. And Bob Allen is our village engineer that can help us with any questions. So just a recap of twenty twenty-three for streets. We were very busy doing sidewalk, concrete work, bike paths. Our new sign machine is, we're, we continue to grow with it. We've been making the banners that you see all around, Marion Bright banners, the banners down West Bartlett. We're learning, we're making new signs for Bartlett Hills. We've actually been working on that, so that hopefully will be going up shortly. It'll be similar to the one at the Bartlett Cemetery, if you've seen that one. So we've been keeping busy. We received the Tree City Growth Award for the second year in a row, which is good news. Our tree crews are out doing parkway tree trimming, which is helping us get caught up. If you remember the ice storm that we had, when was it, a month ago or whenever it was? We had damage, but I think we would have had much more if we hadn't been very aggressive on that program. So that's helping, we'll continue that moving forward. Moving on to budget highlights, you'll see that we're looking at a fifteen percent increase. Most of that is related to the vehicles that we still have not received and then moving a lot of the storm capital projects into the street budget. So we'll, we'll, we'll get into that. But we're going to continue on bike path maintenance. I believe we're finishing up the Newport Trail down to Sterns this year. We'll continue working on all that stuff. I'm going to kind of go through this unless you guys have questions fairly quick. We continue to convert our streetlights to LEDs using the ComEd rebates, which has been very helpful in that regard. As far as the summary, we're proposing no additional staff. So no changes there. We've got streets operating on page two thirty-nine. That's where you see a long list. The first two items, which was actually three trucks, were already ordered and approved at current fiscal year. We're going to be lucky, we're, it's, we're going to be lucky to get them in twenty twenty-four, it sounds like. What we did include, line item three, two additional plow trucks are due and then small plow truck. Once again, I don't think these will be available until probably twenty twenty-five, the earliest. But you kind of have to get in line in order to get them. So we're proposing that we keep that going so that we can stay in line and be able to get these whenever they are able to make them. You'll see item five is a vehicle lift. This is our original lift from eighty-five. It actually has been failing inspections and they're fine, having a difficult time getting parts for us. So we're proposing at this point to replace it. And we're also looking to add a garage to make it easier to get trucks in and out to the lift. We've got furnaces within that garage that need to be replaced, so we're proposing to start replacing those. We've got, the item seven is roof storage bins. That's basically a lean-to off of one of our buildings where we can store gravel, dirt, and that type of stuff, prevent it from getting frozen, basically try to keep the rain out of it so you don't have a big old solid clump during the winter when we're dealing with water main breaks and that type of stuff. And then the last item is a manhole inspection camera that all three divisions would actually benefit from. This item, if we can avoid going into a man, have a person going into a manhole, we would like to do that. So this would be one item that would help us not have to go into manholes because you can drop the camera in, be able to do an inspection, may not have to go in there at all. Or if you know you have to go in to do some type of repair, you can kind of do a preliminary before you put someone in there to make sure that things are safe, that they can go in. I don't know if you've heard in the news, Westmont, there was a tragedy where an individual went into a valve vault, ended up getting stuck and he lost his life. So things like that where we want to prevent guys going in as much as possible. And it would be split because we got store manholes, sanitary manholes, valve vaults, those type of things. Everybody would be able to benefit from it. Any questions on that?
So currently, our gravel, sand, and dirt is exposed?
Correct. Well, we actually have a sludge storage bin where we, we store sludge. But when we have it empty, we can put, we'll put a lot of, like, our topsoil will go in there. So that's something that, you know, it's a balancing act. If we had a different location, we didn't have to worry about that. That would be something that we could, we wouldn't have to worry about the sludge storage location.
Anyone else? Let's move on to finance then.
All right, well, still got some more. I'm happy going on.
I guarantee I've heard enough.
Really.
A little more than that.
You can go on the water if you guys are good with streets. There really wasn't a lot of changes other than it's really the vehicles that is.
And we budgeted those for, for those before. We're just, we didn't get them, so now we're just moving them.
Budgeting for them because we didn't, we didn't spend the money yet. So I'll run over to water, which is on page two forty-eight. Two forty-eight, so we continued, I know we had a successful art hydrants throughout town, but we also have been painting hydrants. We did over three hundred hydrants. So between those two programs, we got over four hundred hydrants painted, which is great. The hydrants are looking a lot better around town. We also had our water main project replace fourteen lead services, which was very good. We're actually going to, with the, with the meter replacement program, we're actually going to start in the area where we believe the lead services are so we can verify how many lead services we have. And then we can start planning moving forward on the replacement of those services. And people have been joining in on the, you know, replacement for that. So it's been successful. As far as activities, we're going to continue with that. We're only showing a three percent increase because we did not have any vehicles previously. But we do have one programmed in the future. In fact, I'll just jump over to, we have no new staff. Here's the, on page two fifty-four is the capital outlay. It's an operator maintenance van that's, actually, that van failed to the point where we did not fix it. And we actually were using a different vehicle on that one and it's gotten to the point. So we're actually proposing to replace one vehicle with, with what we were using for two. So we're asking to replace one. And then the other two items are the ones that were cost-sharing, the storage bins and the camera. That's really, and the line item stuff, it's still, it's not a lot of changes. Chemical costs are going up, so we have some increases there. But there's not a lot going on other than the one vehicle in water. Are there any questions on water?
Hey, Dan, what's the residents' assistance program?
So we have a lead service replacement program where, well, if it's part of our water main replacement program, we actually paid a hundred percent. But residents that have lead service that we aren't doing any work there, we have a cost-sharing program where if they want to get rid of that lead service right now, then we do a cost-sharing program with them. So that's kind of that.
Is most of that finished? I mean, is there still a lot of residents that have that?
We're estimating about two hundred services. Once we get those meters installed, we'll have a better idea. But we're estimating at two hundred to two fifty, so not a terrible. But we're estimating at two hundred to two fifty, so not a terrible amount of numbers, but it does add up when it's close to $10,000 per service.
I don't wanna sound like I think lead pipes are a good idea, but, um, the change, the, the requirement and the timetable for that has been dictated by the state. And when we had the meeting at DuPage Mayor and Managers last week with Representative Hershaw, we made sure to point out that while the state puts mandates for good things, police training, lead, you know, lead service replacement, those are things that cost money that they are demanding that we do on their timetable, yet they're taking LDGF away and chipping away from that. So, we made sure to make the point that that balance sheet needs to be more balanced. I just wanted to get my plug in for LDG.
Yeah. How long do we need to continue these radium removal treatments for these wells?
We have until twenty-six, I believe. So, in the next two to three years, those contracts will be due. The decision will be well seven, which is over by Kent Circle, that one we will eliminate. The one at Sterns Road, the pump station that we're gonna be modifying, that is an emergency, say, backup. So, we need to make a decision at that point. I really don't wanna get into a contract, radium removal, for something that we hope never to use. But in the event that we do need to use it, we need to have something. So, we're looking at what we can do on a shorter term, um, to make sure that we have an emergency backup. That would be like emergency hookup with Hanover Park that we've been working on. We did one with Streamwood. We're looking at other options as well, uh, South Elgin we've been talking to. So, if we can get some of those interconnects, then hopefully we would be able to eliminate that well altogether and not have a radium removal, uh, system that we would have to extend.
If we're, if we have an, if we have loans and we make payments on the loans, the principal of the loans generally go down? So, I'm just curious why the IEPA loan principal, we're requesting more, six thousand more? It's on page twenty-six.
Yeah, on the IEPA loans, it's a flat payment. So, as the, as the interest goes down, the principal goes up. It's, it's same amount each, each year.
Anything else, Dan?
Nothing if, unless you guys have questions. We'll move on to sewer.
Two sixty-three or page thirty-one? Yep, um, so to touch on some of the highlights, we lined approximately 12,000 linear feet of sanitary sewer mains and thirty-five resident service lines with our cost-sharing program. This helps cut down on inflow and infiltration through ground and stormwater. We've purchased the Vapec system, as you saw in the December board meeting, which will be installed relatively soon at the Brewster Creek Lit, Brewster Creek Lift Station, which should help eliminate odors from the industrial users. And then we maintain compliance with our IPA permit even through construction of the plant. And so, moving on to there, we have no personnel requests. In the capital outlay, two of the items, three and four, you've already seen. Number one is a, is an influent pump that is a grinder. This is to help protect the new equipment that will be going in upstream. And with this, when flows get over the design, which with the additional flow from Cook County that'll be coming, will happen probably more regularly, these will serve more as a backup to get anything solid in the flow, so to say. So, it's protecting our bigger investment of the whole plant upgrade. And utility vehicles being requested, this is more like one of those gators and it's replacing the current fifteen-year-old vehicle that we have. And it helps the operators get around the plant, carry the, and other maintenance equipment that they may need. From there, professional development and associations are all the same. And on to expenditures, the only things that have increased, overtime salaries have been adjusted based on past actuals and having to run equipment longer, guys having to stay longer due to the construction. So, hopefully that should even out once construction's over. And then chemical costs, as explained in the other ones, is increasing just like everything else. And unfortunately, we need it more than ever now to stay in compliance with our permit. And that was the quick version of the sewer. So, if anyone has any questions on it, otherwise I can move on to parking.
I'm sure we'll all have thousands of questions on parking.
Yeah, let's move.
That should take a whole hour, maybe.
Let's get the quick version of parking, okay?
Nothing.
Pull in, you pay and you leave.
There were eight cars that parked in Metro last year, so we're a little over that, but.
Fine. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Right before finance, we're gonna skip back to professional, professional services. That includes our, uh, well, I'll let Matt go over our professional services.
Good page.
So, this is on page one fourteen, if I have it correct.
Yes.
So, yeah, good evening, mayor and board. So, yeah, as Todd said, I'll be going through the professional services budget, which is part of the general fund. It's a small budget, so I'm just gonna go line by line real quick. First line item is actuarial consultants. We use Foster and Foster. They produce the yearly police pension actuarial, actuarial report. There are no changes to this budget. Next line item is professional planners. Last year, we had budgeted 56,250 for a consultant to work on the village's unified development code. In evaluating this project, we've determined that this can be removed from the, from the budget. The village ended up receiving grant assistance to complete some of the more complex portions of the unified development code. Because of this, it has become a smaller project that Planning and Development Director Ms. Stone believes can be completed in-house. We are, however, adding 30,000 to this line item for a TIF consultant. And this comes at the direction of the board at the strategic planning workshop. Next line item is legal services, uh, which is where the village attorney, labor attorney, traffic and housing court, adjudication and miscellaneous legal expenditures get charged. Their contracts are brought to the board at the first, uh, board meeting of May each year for approval. So, I'm not gonna go into detail on this now. But we are increasing this budget very slightly to 384,000, which is a 3% incre, increase, or just less than 10,000. Next line item is engineering services.
Excuse me, excuse me. So, the social worker from part-time to full-time, did we not, did, we saw that in the police budget, didn't we?
Yeah. Ivan?
The, the social worker is out of the police department, but her payment, because she is a professional and it's a separate contract, we pay for it out of this.
So, it transfers from one to the other then? Okay, thank you.
Uh, so.
You know the answer.
Engineering, uh, miscellaneous engineering, engineering fees gets charged here. So, any engineering that isn't related to a specific project account goes here. This can be hard to predict since it just depends on the miscellaneous projects and needs that come up during the year. Normally, we budget 60,000 here. Last year, we budgeted 100,000. We included 40,000 for a sewer rate study in case that was needed. So, we are taking that out of this budget and bringing it back to the, to the normal 60,000. Social, social services, uh, this account includes the budget for the police psychologist, Dr. Tammy Juswin, and this is where the social worker, um, gets budgeted. We receive, um, the social worker through the Northeast Page Family and Youth Services nonprofit organization. So, there are no changes to Dr. Juswin, Juswin's budget of 26,000. 19,000 is for the annual psychologist consultation fees. Her contractual obligation is for 30 hours a month. Her remaining budget of 7,000 is for the mandated mental health screenings for police officers that is due to the police reform bill. So, this was new in last year's budget. And then, yeah, as the social worker goes, we are requesting an increase in this budget from 29,450 to 66,352. And as Chief Perkel has discussed in the police budget, he is requesting that the social worker go from part-time to full-time. And the last line item is contingencies that we are keeping at 20,000. So, that's it for professional services. Overall, the budget is down 19,898 dollars, or 3%. Unless there's any questions, I think I'll be turning it over to Todd for the finance budget.
Go for it, Todd.
What page?
Uh, the finances on page 140. Thank you. The finance department, it does, it does include accounting, utility billing, information technology, graphic information systems, main office cashiers. But the financial, finance budget, the part that we're gonna be looking at here is, is only for the accounting and the main office cashiers. It's, uh, water billing clerks are, are charged out to water sewer and, uh, information technology, GIS, they're, they go through central services and Chris will be handing a central services fund after, uh, after this fund. So, you'll see most of the, um, equipment and the, uh, software and things like that will be in the central services fund and then that's allocated throughout all the funds. You may have seen towards the bottom of each department, shows their central services transfer. That's how our central services fund is funded, similar to our vehicle replacement fund. So, I'll let Chris talk about that earlier, but one of, one of the things in our department is we're looking to add one, one person, a full-time entry-level IT help desk to help with the, the addition, especially with, with all of the equipment. Everybody has, uh, equipment in the police department, in the, um, planning and development, golf, all the, everything from telephones to computers, uh, to copy machines. That's what the, the IT department covers all of that.
I have a quick question with that, uh, more with the phones 'cause I see the move to Microsoft 365. I know, like, so I used to have a phone in my desk at work and our organization switched to the phone system, like, through Teams and 365, which it saved a lot of money for the firm because then there's, like, less maintenance as well. Is that something the village is looking at, like, with this IT plan and having this person onboarded?
Well, the, the primary reason for bringing this person on is, well, there's three reasons. The first is, uh, we actually, as GIS has matured, um, we have much more work for GIS to do. So, right now, we have one full-time GIS and actually, when I took over GIS, I made that second position half GIS, half IT, um, just because we were so hurting for help with, with IT work. So, my hope is to be able to refocus that person to do more GIS work. Just about every public activity, from the Best Burger in Town, from the Community Survey, from the CIPUC online, um, that's all done by GIS, um, those backend pieces. The second reason for adding another person is, um, to help police. We, we, police, uh, is quite a, an environment to, to, to provide support for, particularly with all the squad cars and all the different systems that they have. It really requires a lot of work. And so, we, we've struggled in the past, and particularly because, you know, the police runs 24/7. So, we don't right now have staff that works that second shift at all. We're always on call 24/7. I mean, if they've got something up, John's right in town and.
Yeah, so I, I completely agree, like, in an age of technology, more technology, you need someone else. I guess my specific question, maybe it's not the right, I, I don't know who the right person to ask, but is changing over, like, a phone system to use utilizing Teams so you don't have actual phones and then a maintenance agreement with that?
Sure, yeah, I mean, eventually, yes. I mean, implementing Office 365 will, would allow us to do something like that, which is to adopt the phone side of it. I don't think it would be something we'd do within the first year. It's, you know, it's, I, Office 365, and, and I feel like I'm jumping ahead because this is really, uh, the central services discussion. But, um, Office 365 is really gonna be probably the biggest jump in technology the village has done in the past 22 years. It, it really has the opportunity to, to be able to do some significant changes for us. Collaboration, productivity, um, security, one of the, you know, with multi-factor authentication, which is a really, is something that at minimum we should be doing and we currently can't do. So, yes, the phone would be definitely something we're looking into. I don't know if, you know, our, our maintenance agreement right now is like 12, 15,000 dollars. I don't think it's gonna offset that much yet, but there's definitely reasons to do it for collaboration as well.
Thank you, Chris. So, I'll, I'll skip ahead. Uh, again, I, I don't know if, uh, a lot of the finance, what we've been doing lately with the high interest rates and with, uh, banks in the news, we do use investment managers, uh, and making sure that all the banks that we have money in, our, our, um, healthy banks, they do, um, analyze them each year. Most of our money is under the 250,000 FDIC limit or in, by collateral or letters of credit and those things are monitored monthly. So, we have, we have not had any trouble with, uh, poor banks, which has been good news.
We're using banks that have actual risk managers?
Our investment managers are, are our risk managers.
Oh, the, the bank's risk managers.
Oh, as far as the, the, the banks, you.
As opposed to ESG?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, we are, we are not requesting any capital in the finance department, but that will come later in, in the central services. Our, uh, our professional development is, is, uh, pretty basic, going to the annual, uh, state association in Peoria. And then we do, we, we do a lot of local, uh, training in our association. We're, we're just in the national, uh, association and then the state association. As far as our line item detail, uh, not a lot is changing. You've seen in some of the other departments that the employee retirement contributions is down this year. That's because of the good year in the stock market for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. Our contribution rate reduced significantly. Some of that might be going the other way after, uh, this last year, though. Also down in, uh, the postage line, in the commodities section, that's where we talked about the BART letter. Most of that, $20,000 is about $16,000 for our BART letter, so it's.
I have a question regarding the postage, 'cause I was wondering, have we seen a reduction in water bills being mailed out? And is that reflected in this deduction?
Our, uh, postage gets, uh, water bill postage gets split between the water and the sewer fund. Our, um, increase in email bills, we're up to about 750, 800 email bills a month. So, that saves us, uh, about, we're, we're machine-read postage, so I think it's 40 cents in that, in that area. So, as the rates increase, our, uh, email bills have basically offset that. So, we haven't seen an increase, but we haven't seen a significant decrease in the amount of postage for, for our water bills. Does that make sense?
Makes sense. I'm just trying to find a way to incentivize or push our residents. Makes sense. I'm just trying to find a way to incentivize or push our residents into only opting in if they want it mailed, rather than opting out.
Yeah, again, I don't see how we're gonna be able to do that. We're in a lot, we don't have emails for most of our residents. We don't have their email address, so I don't believe that we can.
If they don't opt for, you know, paperless, they got a 4% water increase coming, you know? But.
A little bit conscious of our seniors. I mean, if you sit in the lobby around the 21st, we constantly have people that wanna walk up and pay their bill. And the parking lot's pretty busy, too. So there's a lot of people who are suspicious of paying their bills that way. But there'll eventually be a tipping point, right? But I don't think we're there yet. Like, to force people.
Not force them, but let them know.
We can't put a police officer right there when they come and pay their bill and, like, intimidate them?
What's your email address?
Here's a citation.
One more thing to note.
Where's your iPad? Learn how to use it.
One more thing I just wanna point out, in the bottom section of the finances is where the transfers are. So last year's budget, we budgeted, some of the excess from the general fund was moved to the municipal building fund, $2 million. This year, we're showing $150,000 to the 59 Lake Street TIF. That's half of the auto mall, according to the sales agreement, goes back to them. And the other half will go to pay towards the loan that was used, inter-fund loan to purchase the property that the parking lot is on for the auto mall. Way back. So that's it for the finance department. I'll turn it over to Chris, then.
All right. All right. We start on page 152. And as Todd said, central services, just so you know, it's not IT and GIS. It's everything from mosquito agreements to elevator maintenance agreements to just about everything you can think of. That can't really be assigned to any individual department. But he's right, most of the capital does is related to IT. So as we discussed, we are asking for a new person this year, a help desk level one. So it's a fairly entry-level. And, you know, one of the reasons we wanna bring on somebody entry-level is because we wanna make sure we build on that succession planning. It takes quite a bit of time to become proficient in the different applications that are used here. They're not necessarily out there in the private sector, so the skills don't always transfer directly. So it takes some time to train someone and really get them up to speed to provide good support, especially when it comes to police. Got any questions in regards to that, I'll move on to the capital outlay. The first item is next-generation firewalls. This is what protects us and controls traffic in and out of our network. Maintenance agreements are coming to an end. I spoke with them, and basically, the way they price things, it's cheaper to replace the existing hardware with new hardware in a new three-year agreement than it is to just renew our maintenance agreement. Item number two is a continuation of our annual replacement of older desktops and laptops, which we do every four years. Number three is some conference room improvements. And this was something that was pointed out in the IT plan, the deficiency we have. And certainly, we saw it during COVID. You know, the days of meeting, everybody meeting in person and reviewing paper item documents are long gone. Today, almost every meeting is a hybrid meeting where you have some people in present and some people are remote, and you're reviewing electronic documents. And this has particularly been business-friendly, as Christie will probably tell you. When the, you know, the developers don't have to pay for their attorneys to drive all the way to the barlet for a meeting, it's a benefit to them as well. So we're looking at upgrading, doing a lot of technological upgrades in most of the conference rooms through all the village buildings.
What is it, specifically, like, speakers, cameras?
So, you know, a camera system that you can actually, you know, have a Teams meeting where they can speak back and forth. We're talking about some smart displays where you can take notes on the screen and do some real interactive things. So to really enhance the meetings and have them in each room. You know, right now, we drag a TV from here to there, and then everybody's like, you got a laptop? And then it's just, it's kind of a mess. It's really, it makes it difficult sometimes to have more than one meeting going on at a time. Item number four is a replacement copiers for administration and police records. Those are over six years and have been more apt to break down recently. Number five kind of plays into our Office 365 implementation. These are authentication tokens that allow us to do that multi-factor authentication. You guys are probably all familiar with MFA. As far as, you know, logging to your bank, they need to send you a code, put the code in. This is really kind of the bare minimum today. You know, the days of just depending on a username and password just aren't enough. The hackers are just way too smart. They trick people. They say, you know, they trick people into giving their way their username and passwords, and then they're in your system and it's over. So the MFA, you know, because it's a physical thing you're holding, makes it much more difficult for somebody to get in, even if they have your username and password. Item number six is an internal detection system. So we do pretty good with our firewalls. We block stuff from coming in. But the one thing that we can kind of have a blind spot on is what if something's already gotten in? You know, unfortunately, our police department does have to take a lot of evidence in. They get videos from places, and you just never know what might be on those things. And so this would allow us to monitor traffic going outbound, look for exfiltration of sensitive data, and be able to stop it before it becomes an issue. Item number seven is an iPad refresh. We've, you know, we've started deploying iPads almost like computers anymore. And we don't support these forever. They have an end of life. And so we're looking at refreshing these older ones. Number eight is a replacement plotter. We have one plotter in the village hall that police and all the village hall department share. We use it for everything from printing maps, making copies of maps, and also incident command when we've gotta get maps for that. Or Pam does tons of things for her museum and her different events. So those are the capital items. If you have any questions to answer. There really isn't any big changes in training or our associations. Again, the biggest change in our line item detail is really the addition of Microsoft licensing. And again, we're probably one of the few organizations that hasn't gone Office 365. Most people are already there. And we haven't because, you know, Pam's have always been tough. Since 2008, we've been kind of, you know, cut, 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 and we've tried to get by. But I think that at some point, you've gotta make the leap. And I think this is actually a great time to make that leap. One, we'll get a lot of additional security and resiliency, you know? We'll be looking at moving our files from here to SharePoint and OneDrive. So people will be able to work from wherever they're at. Not everybody's sitting at a desk anymore to do their work. They're on their iPads. And if their files are on a file server, they're not accessing them.
Does it make sense to keep getting desktop computers?
I'm sorry?
Does it make sense to keep getting desktop computers if people are gonna be working from anywhere? Like, at what point would you change over to all laptops or mobile?
Well, you know, for security reasons, even when people wanna work from home, we make them actually remote into their desktop. So they have to use an SSL VPN and get into their desktop. So we prevent them from creating a connection of their network to our network. They're basically just kind of seeing screen, you know, they're getting the screen and they can control the computer here. So it still makes a lot of sense for security reasons to buy desktops. And still, we, most of our staff is still working at a desk. But again, these days, hours change. People are moving from here to there.
And, you know, with all the talk about the security, Chris just finished a grant application to feds?
Yeah, it was the Federal Congressional Direct.
Yeah, through Duckworth's office and with support from DuPage County Homeland Security. Because of all these additional security and different features that we're upgrading to, there was a proportion of that grant through Homeland Security for cyber security improvement. So we were able to apply for that grant, and fingers crossed, I hope they see it as important as we do.
Yeah, that would, it was actually funding directly for the implementation of Office 365. There's, I mean, plus, there's just some other great components we're not currently making use of, like Microsoft Planner, you know, something that allows, you know, departments to create projects and assign tasks to employees. And employees have their task lists already pre-built with due dates. And it makes it easy for, you know, the managers to track projects and know who's got doing what and when they've done it or haven't done it. So I think there's so many productivity tools that I think it would really be to our benefit at this point to implement this. I know it's a big expense, but I think it'll pay back in productivity. And I don't know if how many of you have used any AI, artificial intelligence, like the ChatGPT? I know it's the big news these days. Microsoft is launching what they call Microsoft Copilot, which will, you know, you'll be able to say, you know what, look at the notes from last meeting and write a summary and send it out to everyone that was at the meeting. And it'll do it, I mean, without staff having to do these things. So it's, again, I think it'd be to the village's benefit to pursue that. Other than that, I think there's really not much in the way of changes as far as line items go. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Not everybody talk at once.
No, I think we've got it, huh?
You know what Office 365 is, Trusty Dany?
Say again?
365 technology.
Yeah, sure, I'm with you. Does that conclude everything that we have to do this evening? I'm glad you all came for the double feature, okay? Really. But I wanna tell you guys, you'd be commended, because last year, it was 9:30. So you beat that by a half hour. I have in my notes that we went to 9:30 last time, so thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions?
Any other questions or concerns? I just thought, especially for new board members, if there are things when you're reviewing this, because I do most of the reviewing of this outside these meetings. If you have anything you need to bring it up to Paula to get any changes made by the next meeting. When is the ratification? May 1st. So we have two meetings left.
May 1st.
On the 4th. Election Day is the day we approve the budget.
If everybody's in agreement, unless you have changes. So then we do have a standby, the second meeting in April to approve it. Just so everybody knows. All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Goodbye, Trusty Dany. Second bye, Trusty Laporte. A quick please call, the role.
Trusty Dany? Dany?
Dany.
Trusty Dany?
Yes, yes, yes.
Jansey?
Yes.
Dunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Laporte?
Yes.
Swansky?
Oh, boy.
We are adjourned. Happy birthday, birthday.